Call the meeting to order. This is the public forum, which we give citizens a chance to ask questions of the committee and receive answers. If we don't have an answer today, we'll circle back to you on it. If we just have a moment of silence before we can start the meeting. Amen. Commissioners, you've seen the public forum agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Widmer. Any discussion and/or questions? All those in favor of the adoption of the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The floor is now open for public comment. There'll be a quick public forum here in a minute. Nobody has anything to say. Entertain a motion to adjourn until 6 o'clock when our regular meeting starts. Second from Commissioner Fouchet. Second from Jim Blake. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As carry, meeting sounds adjourned until 6 o'clock when our regular meeting begins.
...
Ladies and gentlemen, I have six o'clock. If we would stand and face the flag and say the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We do not alter, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'll stand for a moment of silence. And I'd ask you tonight, if you would just think about Angela Murphy and her family, her father James and her brother Jeff, as they've lost, Angela has lost her mother and wife to James and mother to Jeff. Commissioners, you've received your agenda, and hopefully you've had a chance to go over it. Do I have a motion from someone to adopt the agenda as presented?
I move we adopt the agendas.
Have a motion from Commissioner Alexander. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Fouché. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Only communication I have is thanks to everyone who participated in preparing the race that we had last Thursday morning, July the 4th, and all the participants in the parade. MRA did a fantastic job, as usual, of putting together a parade and a wonderful day of activities for our community. And I just ask that you, running the MRA people, just tell them thank you. Consent agenda? Want to cover that?
So, on our consent agenda, we have the May 24 special meeting minutes, the June 13 public forum meeting minutes, and the June 13 town council meeting minutes. I don't have very much in the way of communication tonight. I do want to thank both our police department and the Public Works Department for their hard work over July 4 weekend. It was very busy. They did a great job. And I wanted to give some numbers on trash collection that Public Works picked up over the course of this week. It's pretty astounding. So, over July 4 week, the Public Works Department picked up 144 cubic yards of trash, 107 cubic yards of bulk goods, and there were 54 cubic yards of trash generated from the convenience center. So, they were extremely busy, and I thank them for all of their hard work over the last week or so.
Can I just comment?
Sure.
On that same subject, I just wanted you all to know that I came back from church on Sunday and was sitting out on my porch and looked up, and Barry's truck was driving by. So, I picked up my phone and called him, and I said, "What are you doing here?" And he said, "Well..." And he talked about the saga of the trash.
Yes, it was a saga, but we, I think we're through it now, hopefully. I also wanted to mention that we are going to begin interviews for Police Chief next week, and thank you to Commissioner Fouché for serving on the interview panel. And I want to extend thanks to our interim chief, Tim Bradley. He's just doing a great job, and he'll be, he'll be with us until we get somebody in full time.
Thank you, Savannah.
Mr. Mayor, I just have, if I could pass these, if you could pass this, these are some minor comments to the May 24 special budget meeting. I don't think we need to bring them up, but they are corrections that need to be made.
Commissioners, you've received reports from the Administration Department, the planning and zoning, police, Public Works and Water, sanitation, streets, finance is still pending. Our finance director had to fill in a lot this week as the town clerk, and she will have those all ready for next, next month for sure. And then the June building permit information. Any questions or comments on any of those reports?
I just have a comment on the sanitation report. I wonder, Savannah, if we could update that, that report format, the pay-as-you-throw is still on there. And I was looking at it just to see what the convenience center was doing, and that's not on here. So, maybe we could come up with some metrics to measure how we're doing with that and just update, since we don't do the pay-as-you-throw anymore.
Sure.
Make it clear that the police report probably costs a...
Any other comments on any of those reports?
So, I will say, on our police report, I'm not sure previously how the numbers were being generated, but these numbers are coming from our CAD system, which is how calls get dispatched to us. So, I, I think they're probably being pulled differently, but I don't know that they are incorrect. And I can have our interim chief speak more to that, maybe in an email to you all, and we can cover it next month.
And I'm not sure we need all the, there's a whole lot of items on that police report.
I agree.
I'm not sure how meaningful they are. There's so many, you really...
I think it's probably time to take a look at all of our reports and get it, get them updated.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I said incorrect, then you...
Yeah, no.
Josh?
Uh, she's not on.
Okay, I'm not going to say anything more than forty.
Any other comments or questions? Floor is now open for public comment. Come on up, Tanner.
Hey, I'm Tanner Pickett, 102 Oak Street, Black Mountain. I'm here on behalf of the MRA. Just wanted to say thank you to the town, particularly Savannah, Barry, Tim, and all the people for the 4th of July, their help. I know that was, that was a heavy lift in general, but particularly when it was the first time for so many people. So, went out, went off without a hitch, and I really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanner.
Thanks, Tanner. Anyone else? Lyda Jean?
Lyda Jean Taylor, 386 Oklahoma Road. This is an election year, and Montreat has some seats available. Filing began, I think, on the 5th and the 19th, and I haven't seen any announcements anywhere for the communities for them to know that this is an election year and we do have seats open. So, it would be a great thing for the Montreat Minute, I think, so that people know. Thanks.
Thanks, Lyda Jean. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda then. Under Old Business, Civil Design Concepts Proposal for Texas Road Pedestrian Bridge Project. Savannah?
Yes, so this is a proposed agreement with Civil Design Concepts for design and engineering and then bidding out the work for Texas Road Bridge. Jess Gardner is here to answer any questions you may have. I spoke to Mayor Pro Tem Blake late this afternoon, and I know that he has some concerns about the agreement. And so, I'll go ahead and ask Jess to come up and, and speak to any questions that you all have about, about this.
I have no concerns, in the sense it's, it's a good agreement, but I'm, I, I'll apologize, I'm a lawyer, so you're, I apologize, Savannah. So, you're stuck with me. For 40 years, people have handed me documents and said, "Should I sign it, or what changes should I make before I sign?" And they did that with a lot of engineering and construction contracts, so I'm not, not unfamiliar with these types of agreements. One, one thing I didn't know whether was contemplated to be within the scope of services, whether there was any, you know, if, if, at least it's been frequent, in my experience, that sometimes after you do the bid opening, there are some, what we refer to as value engineering that goes on before the final, with minor changes in plans and specifications, and maybe not so much with this kind of a job. I didn't know whether any of that was contemplated as it's within the scope of services.
Um, I think I have, it probably falls under contract admin, in what they must go to services. I don't anticipate yet with this type of project. However, if, if we're surprised on bid day, and that needs to happen, that's something we can visit at that point.
Okay. A second concern I've got is in Article 2. The second sentence is worded narrowly, which basically says that if you get the information from anybody else, then we're going to identify you for it. I can understand that if we give you the information, that we're going to identify you because, and you can, you're going to rely. But if, if you say, "We need this information," and we say, "We don't have it, or we're not confident about it," and why don't you go ahead and get it, as that provision allows you to do, and we'll pay for it, but you get it from somebody you, you want, I, I'd like to revise that wording to say, "You're going to look to them to identify you for the, for that information."
Yeah, in this scenario, the surveyor is my subcontractor, so that's, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. And then, I'd like to revise numerous provisions of Article 3, which is the exclusion from, exclusions from the scope of work. And I realize this is probably a standard provision you got, and you really didn't match it up right with what we've got, but...
That's right.
There's, there's a number of provisions in there where you're excluding work that, where you've got a large exclusion that, that excludes work that's clearly included within our scope. For example, you exclude all ACOE permitting, which clearly, including in the scope of work, is an ACOE, nationwide permit. Or you exclude all, you exclude all structural work, but now we've got structural work, and you've got, you're going to subcontract structural work for the, for the...
Yes, I agree, I agree.
You've got no topographic work. We got topographic work going on. So, I'll, I'll be glad to work with you and give you this list, but we, I don't think we can sign it till we just tighten up stuff up.
Yep, 100%.
The last thing is, and you're probably not familiar with this, but North Carolina has laws in dealing with municipal finance where we can't sign a written agreement or contract to pay money unless our finance director signs a written certification on that contract, which, you know, it's called a pre audit. And it says that she's looked at our budget, and there's an appropriation in that budget sufficient. And then there's money in them that hadn't been spent. And we've got to sign it, and we got to figure out some way, and it should be easy. I've got some thoughts, but there's, this is totally open-ended. There's nothing that says there's a guaranteed maximum, and it could be $400,000 theoretically. And I realize that's only theoretical, and again, I'm not being critical at all. It's, but the fact is, we got to have some wording there that allows our finance director to pre-audit it, or we can't sign it. So, I'll be glad to work with you with all those changes.
Yeah, a pretty comment for us to do hourly not to exceeds, to put a number to it.
Yeah, put a not to exceeds a good way, but that's not in here, and so, you just need to...
Okay.
Any other questions of Jesse?
Yeah, and I'm not a lawyer. I'm very simple. The dates are wrong. You, you need to update the dates because this contract expired back in December of last year, I think.
I'm happy to, as we go through these...
Okay.
...we issue more examples.
And just a, a question, particularly spinning off of Mason's question on the hourly. What do you project? I, I'm always concerned about an open-ended contract. What, when we talk, there, there are a lot of open questions, but now that you know a little bit more, what you've got there adds up to 56,000, which is what we had agreed, or not agreed to, but had, had talked about bringing to the council. What do you expect the, the total to be with those two hourly?
So, if I were to put hourly not to exceeds on contract administration and observation, and the reason we've kind of shifted that as a firm to those is every client's different, and every needs different, and it, it is hard for us to know how much help in the field will we need. In this project, I don't anticipate a ton. And in the, you know, I've been working with Barry for six-plus years, is a lot of my observation and admin has been when Barry asks me to. It's not that I just go do it. It's when I've been asked to do it. So, I would, I would recommend, I, you know, if I'm rewriting this contract, I would probably exceed the hourly not to exceed $5,000. That could, only way that would change is me and Barry had talked about, maybe he puts the contract together, and I just, there as engineer to help answer questions, or I can do the full contract. That would be kind of that, what would swing in, how much time I spend on it. And then, construction observation, I would put probably a max not to exceed $10,000.
How much?
$10,000. And that would be, if I spent that much money, I'd be out here a lot, and I wouldn't think I would get to that point, based off of what I've done here over the last six, six months of this.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments of Jesse?
My question might be better posed after you and Mason go over the additional services, but I was sort of blown away by 21 additional things that we might have to provide. And I have no way of putting sort of a cost estimate on that.
Yeah, I guess, let me, I think Mason gets why I do that, is this is kind of a boilerplate scope of services or contract that I, you know, I don't customize every project. This, this, I got the standard language that works on, you know, I probably write 150 proposals a year, and, and that applies to subdivisions I design. And so, it's not very specific, so it is more of a menu-style proposal. I, you know, I probably was oversight that I've missed a couple of additional services that should have been, you know, I've already wrote scope that I am covering it in here. And so, some of, some of the stuff that should have been in there, I'll take one, but that just, you know, I just didn't redline it enough to pull that out. But it's kind of, because this is a boilerplate contract for, that we use with our clients all the time. Is that a point you...
Yeah, I just want to be prepared for the cost of whatever additional services we do.
I don't, I, I don't plan to add additional services to anything I foresee in this project. I wouldn't bury it, or hide it, or try to come back for something. We're a relationship firm, is, I'm going to give you a quote, I want, I want to beat that number, and hopefully deliver on the bridge that's on, on time and on budget, so.
But, but it is legitimate for him to exclude things, Kitty, just so you'll know.
Oh, yeah.
In his business, margins are tight, and if it's not, if it's something he doesn't foresee...
Right.
He doesn't have the money in there to pay for.
Yeah, like, I would, like, I, I'm not designing the electrical, if you wanted to put lights on this bridge, I wouldn't design electrical lights on this bridge, you know? Those are some of the things that we try to just make sure we cover. People will hear engineer, and they think, well, he's got everything covered in it.
Yeah. Actually, I'm not questioning that. I, I understand all these things. I was just sort of outside of you, thinking about what money we need to have on hand to pay for these things that you're not supplying and have told us you're not supplying.
Yeah, and I would say, just knowing what I think you're after, which is a pedestrian bridge, and if you're not putting lights on it, I don't, I think what I'm telling you is covering a lot, you know, I, I don't anticipate something that's not, that I'm aware of, that I do or not do, that I'd have to get somebody to help us do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so, yeah, I, I think we've, me and Barry's work to give you a good, realistic budget that is all encompassing, whether I designed it or not, or someone needed somebody else's help.
All right, thank you.
And I think one thing we could do tonight, if everyone wanted to move forward, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jess, is we could go ahead and give the green light to start design and bidding, and then take care of some of these changes we need to make in the contract and, and bring it back, maybe with even more firm, hard numbers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to knock out the, the red lines to the contract. But, yeah, if we wanted to just, I think I've heard you have a little bit of concerns of the total budget of the job. If we wanted to progress in the design, and then come back once the project is designed and bid, then we can just know the real number of the job. Then, we know it's X dollars, and that's your decision. If we want to spend X dollars at that point in time, or if it's under budget, or if it's over budget, then we know that we have funds available to cover that discrepancy. That's not in common. It's usually, I, I, usually we're coming back to a board and saying, "Okay, here's the bid, and here's what it costs. Are we ready to proceed with this contract or this proposal?"
Commissioners, what's your desire?
Do we need to amend this motion to, to allow us to go ahead with revisions?
I, I, I think, I think all we can do, I, I candidly, I'm just trying, I'm talking out loud, I think...
Commissioners, what's your desire?
Do we need to amend this motion to allow us to go ahead with revisions?
I, I think, I think all we can do, I candidly, I'm just trying, I'm talking out loud, I think all we can do is, to concur, we need to move forward, finalize, we would like to move forward, finalize this contract, knowing that it needs to have some revisions. Whether we can authorize him, if we authorize, I say, my problem Savannah, is any kind of authorization from this board, for him to, for us to be incurring money without a pre-audit, I, we can't go there, we're crossing a line that would get us all in trouble with our favorite folks in Raleigh.
Yeah. So maybe what we can do is just, instead of waiting until the next regular meeting, we'll get this taken care of, and maybe call a special meeting to get it rolling. Okay, okay, that sounds good.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jesse, appreciate it. First Bank Loan, Savannah?
Yes, so, we spoke about this last month, that you all authorized me to go ahead and move forward with the First Bank loan, but then Commissioner Widmer had asked if I could look into potentially getting a better interest rate. I spoke with First Bank, and they, they do want to lock in at the 6.18% interest rate for the loan, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone still felt comfortable with that. I don't think we're going to get a much better rate than that, and we do have a good working relationship with them. I would like to get the contract with CDC in place before we actually sign, you know, the terms of the loan with the bank and borrow the money. But that's, that's kind of why it's on the agenda, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So, as we go forward and develop a, develop a final proposal with Jesse, then we'll go back and visit the loan, and go ahead and move on that, right?
Right, so
So both of these items will appear on the future agenda.
Yeah, so what I would like to do is have, have it set so that, once, once the contract is in place with CDC, that you'll see the terms of the loan, but that we're, we're ready to go ahead and sign with that.
But, what I was thinking about as I was reading this, was the issue of, we've set aside 125, correct? From, for, of our own funds, 125,000? No, 150, I'm sorry, 150 of our own, and then 100 here. What happens if it is either higher or lower? You know, obviously, we wouldn't spend, is it better for us to borrow less and use our own funds? I would think so, but if we engage with this 100,000 after we get the preliminary from Jesse, I guess I'm saying, should we wait until we get the bids in before we engage this contract with First Bank? Or, seek a line of credit that would float one way or the other, and we grab what we need?
We can, if that's how you all would like to proceed, we can. There is no payoff penalty for this loan, so if we, if we ended up, you know, whether we wanted to appropriate it from fund balance, whether we wanted to, you know, we didn't use the total sum, whatever it is, there wouldn't be any issue with, with paying it off early.
Okay, but the opposite wouldn't, wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do that if it, if we needed 120,000.
Right.
And let's say our fund balance was at a point where we didn't want to take that additional 20 out.
So they are, they're comfortable, you know, we spoke about 200,000 originally, and then lowered it to 200, so if you want to, I don't think there's going to be an issue borrowing up to 200,000, but if you wanted to wait until we got the bids back, and, you know, if we did need maybe 120, or something like that, I think that's fine.
One suggestion that might sort of solve the problem, because there's this desire, I know, to get, right, what's the deal going to be, but would be to get a commitment letter from anywhere between 100 and
Like a line of credits?
That's right, just a commitment letter, it's not a loan, it's a commitment letter, and hopefully they'll give us without a commitment fee, and, and part of the requirements of that commitment will let us get the final bid on the, on the bridge. But you'll have the terms finalized, except for, we won't know the exact final
Right, I can, I can, I'm supposed to be speaking with the bank tomorrow, so I'll ask them about that, if that would be an option. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that would, they would be fine with that.
Savannah speaks to them, do you want her to proceed with getting that line, or not?
The commitment letter?
Yeah, as long as there's not a fee, and I don't think there was on the original proposal, so
No, okay.
Let's get a motion to that effect, to authorize her to do that?
I'll move we authorize the town manager to negotiate a commitment letter with First Bank between 100 and
200.
$200,000 to cover the bridge project with the final amount to be determined when we get the bid documents in and signed.
The only thing I would add to your motion
Do what? I need a second before we can discuss it. Okay.
We want to make sure that it has the loan terms in it, the commitment letter.
Okay, had a motion, had a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. Next item on the agenda is new business, discussion of Article I of Chapter D of Montreat General Ordinance. Mason?
Yes, I'm essentially here representing the Tree Board, which I am a member of as the representative of the council. Folks have been urging the Tree Board, various people in appearances before our board, to take some action with regard to the closing of rights-of-way. The concern being that rights-of-way closure, perhaps when that process goes forward, it's not enough attention is being paid to trees, that's why we're the Tree Board, but there are other environmental factors as well. There's, there is, let me say, this is an area that the state regulates primarily. North Carolina general statutes, 168-299, covers street closings, and in that process, and it's fairly involved, including a public hearing, et cetera, the commission before closes a street has to make essentially two findings. One is that closing the street is not contrary to the public interest. Second finding is that you're not going to deny anybody else access to their property by virtue of this. And what, what the Tree Board is recommending is that we add a new Section 12 of Article I of Chapter D, which is in Street Ordinance, which basically says that when considering applications to close streets, that in determining, you know, what's, or whether or not something is contrary to the public interest, we look at impacts the closing of the street might have on trees, tree canopy, open space, and other environmental factors. And so, let me just say, the wording, and this is for discussion only, and I'm making a motion, the wording here, we, I made up on the spot in the middle of our Tree Board hearing, as we made this recommendation to council. I think council for, if this council wants to move forward with it, we need to refer it to our town council to help with that wording, it's not going to be long, but somebody ought to look at it. Secondly, we need to refer it also to town council if we want to move forward with it, because, because we need to make sure that it would, that we have a good, good idea it would be a valid ordinance. And basically, just to explain that, in North Carolina, there are limits on municipal powers, and essentially, we can't regulate subjects that the state or the federal government has made a clear intention that they're regulating it. And here, we do have a long state ordinance that covers street closings. Now, it doesn't say it's, it doesn't, in my opinion, clearly say it precludes local regulation, or at least it's supplementary to it. And I think it's probably valid, but I'm no North Carolina lawyer, and certainly haven't researched it, and don't have the means to research it thoroughly. So, that issue needs, if this council would like to move forward with it, again, this is for discussion purposes only, I think we would need to get council to help us draft the final ordinance and do that research.
Yes, I spoke to our town council via email about this, and they are happy to investigate the legality of it, if, you know, if it's something that you're interested in, just to make sure that it would be valid. They, he didn't commit one way or the other, you know, in our conversation, but they're happy to investigate if you, if y'all are interested.
Commissioners, this, this requires no motion or no second, floor's open for discussion, so dive in.
Okay, when I read it, Mason, I was concerned about having an ordinance that say you will consider something, because it seems to me that just opens up possibilities of saying, you didn't consider it, yes, I did consider it, and how can you prove whether you've considered it to the degree that is appropriate? And I like for our ordinances to be a little clearer, and I don't think that this does anything, certainly we would consider all that without being ordered to, and I don't like things that open up, you know, more tension, of yes, you didn't consider it enough, or yes, we did consider it.
That's fine. Again, the answer to that, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just playing the devil's advocate, is that the standard here in the ordinance, in the statute, is frankly fairly vague.
Yeah.
Contrary to public interest, what is that?
Yeah, yeah, it's already vague enough without us adding more.
And, and so, you, you know, if somebody presents evidence that they think is contrary to public interest, whether or not it's in that statute or not, you're still going to get sued, but I understand where you're coming from, but I do, I can tell you that we did get input from a number of residents that believe that that ought to be considered, and again, the language would be inclusive, it wouldn't be just, certainly, we wouldn't consider environmental factors, it would be other, all other relevant factors, but I'm not, I certainly understand what you're saying, Kitty, appreciate it.
Are there other comments or thoughts?
I think when you and I chatted about it, you had said that the council, the council, our town council, was not in favor of it? Did you say that earlier today?
I knew, in my original email, when I sent you the language, Kitty said the exact same thing in her email back to me that she just said, but
I don't mean this council, I mean our attorney, town attorney.
Oh, our attorney. No, it's like what I said earlier, they're just, he didn't commit one way or the other to whether or not it would be valid or illegal to put it in our code, but he can investigate it for us and see what we think. I had always heard, you know, that you wanted to avoid adding more qualifications to rights-of-way closure, but I don't know if that is just a best practice, or if that came from an attorney, but that is something that I had picked up along the way, just as, whatever that's worth.
So is he going to consider it and get back to you?
It depends on direction from you all. If you, if you want him to consider, if you want him to take a look at it, he will.
I don't think it hurts us for him to take a look at it, but if the council just doesn't want to go there, then let's not waste his time. I, but it, we'll get a read from him. I frankly, I can, I can, you can read, you can make arguments both ways, without going in and see what case law is there, it's, but I think it's
Well, I'll just give you my opinion. You know, all you have to do is look at my yard and know that I love trees, and I don't like to see trees cut down, but I, but I can tell you that town councils of past, town council of present, and I'm sure future town councils, take right-of-way abandonment very seriously. And when we consider it, we consider a lot of other things besides what's in here, besides just the tree canopy, open space, and environmental impact, there are a lot of other factors, and to load up another addition to the ordinance, and try and think of all those different things, I just think is overregulation. So, I personally don't have an appetite for, for this particular addition.
I would agree with that, it seems a bit of an extra burden that maybe isn't necessary for something that's not common. I can tell you every tree in my yard that has woolly adelja on it, which is zero, because I treat them. I love the trees in my, in my yard, I am a tree lover, I think I said I was a tree hugger earlier today, I said that. So, I love trees, I want Montreat to be full of trees, I love the treasured, treasured tree path that's recently been instituted in Montreat, I think it's fantastic. I teach my kids, you know, we were constantly identifying which trees are which in town. I'm with Tom, it seems like an extra burden maybe that, that we would be, that we would have to kind of defend, and that I don't know if that's necessary, but
If we can't count to three without even knowing the answer, then I'm going to just, we'll just take this. Then we'll just, we'll just not take this any further, okay?
Is that the, is that the consensus of the board, just not go any further with? Okay. All right, moving on, next item is public comment, again, floor's open for public comment. Okay, commissioners, do you have any communication tonight? Anybody?
I'd like to talk about a subject, I just, I also want to thank the town staff for everything they did, the amount of stuff that was handled over the Fourth of July week. I would like to, particularly when we're charging now our new garbage or trash fee, I think we need to focus a little bit more planning on the Fourth of July week to cover it, and I know it's not the town's fault, but we had a, the people who haul off our, from our convenience center, did not perform up to standards, we just, we got up, and that's nobody's fault, and again, not passing any blame, but we got to try to do better, I think, particularly given our bear situation. And the second thing is, I've received a number of complaints in the process of this whole trash thing, about the fact that people are depositing the, first, we don't, we don't, we don't have a curb-your-dog sort of regulation, and people are depositing their dog's feces, or not collecting their dog's feces, or in people's yards, they're also putting their dog's feces in trash cans, and not taking them where they should be disposed of properly. A good friend and neighbor across the street of mine, the first time he gets to Montreat, every time, he has to go to his garbage can, open the, open the, open the lid, and clean out putrid dog feces that's been dumped in it by people walking by, and I just, you know, I know you're not going to solve this with regulation, but if we have a regulation on how people should do it, a good number of people follow the law, and if we have some informational signs on some key dog-walking areas, and communicate to dog walkers, most dog walkers follow the law, and I think we can help that situation. At least let people know what we expect is normative here in Montreat, and that's to be kind to your neighbors and not leave dog feces in their yards or in their trash cans.
I saw just the opposite around the lake, where the containers are for dog feces, and they've got cups and plates and all kinds of things in there, so we need to ask people to use trash and not our dog dispensing.
Yeah, I, I am happy to maybe do some research on a pet waste ordinance, I think that that's a good thing to have. I think that that's a good thing to have, um, and that, that's something I can bring back to you.
And I, and I, I can tell you, our town employees that work on the town, right-of-way, like Mike can just tell you, it's, it's really bad in a lot of places.
Yeah.
And, and he's got to deal with it, so.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe it's worth putting a reminder in the Montreat Minute or something that's, let's remind people to be neighborly.
Uh, they've added, uh, at least two more, uh, pet waste receptacles, so, uh, we went from none to two, uh, to seven or eight now, um, and I'm thankful for that, and, um, and I am a dog walker, and, um, and those containers are full, they, particularly this past week.
On the way to the meeting, Daniel and, uh, was, was stopping his truck up here on Assembly Drive, and I stopped and rolled down my window, and Daniel said, Mayor, there is no lack of dog waste in Montreat. No lack.
Those receptacles aren't expensive, we can put lots more of them up, so.
Kitty?
George Sawyer brought to attention to me, uh, before the meeting, that not all the houses in Montreat have house numbers posted. Is that, is that a rule? I mean, are we supposed to have?
You, you are supposed to have your house number posted, yes. So if you don't have a house number up, it's, it, the emergency responders need to have it. Um, I know that you all don't receive mail at your homes, but the fire trucks, ambulances, police officers, they really need to have those numbers posted.
It's a requirement to get a C L, I think.
Yes, yes.
Maybe that could be in the Montreat Minute, a reminder. Thanks, George.
Anyone else?
Uh, we received a comment, uh, from Shirley Mitchell today on, uh, real estate signs, and I, I've noticed as well that, uh, not just real estate signs, but other signs as well, and I've yanked a few, uh, myself, and brought them to Savannah. Savannah, can we just work with the police department and even Public Works? I know it's not their job, but can we make it their job to, uh, make sure that the, uh, the signs on public right-of-ways are, uh, are, are not, uh, that aren't appropriate or, or not left in place?
Yes, so we, uh, we're always happy to pull signs out of the right-of-way. If you see one, give us a call, we'll go get it. Um, and I, I will ask the staff to just pay extra attention to our rights of way, to make sure that there are no, um, inappropriate signs there, and, um.
Can I just add?
Yeah.
When, uh, when the police are, um, are traveling our 17 miles, it's pretty easy to see, um, signs that are in the right-of-way, that are inappropriate, real estate signs, uh, uh, cleaning, uh, sides of houses, spray, that kind of thing.
Yes, and my request to the public is to let, uh, let town staff engage with businesses who are putting signs in the right-of-way. Uh, we'll do the code enforcement, you just let us know that there's a problem.
I've pulled several through the years and brought them to Angie, and then she usually takes care of it, talk on the business and so forth. And I want to thank Grant Dasher's mother-in-law. He, she and I picked up trash.
Mimi, we call her Mimi.
The fifth. Do what?
So we call her Mimi.
Mimi, well, I got a Mimi too. But, uh, we picked up trash on the fifth that was put in front of the, uh, the dumpsters out here at the convenience center, uh, probably about 10 or 15 of the blue bags, and eight or 10 of the, of garbage bags, and it was not that the, the convenience center was full, it's just that people putting them in built a pyramid right in front of the door, and all it takes is pushing them either side and putting it in. But Grant's mother was a champion that day. I kept throwing, and she kept bringing. Anyone else, anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion from Commissioner Fouchet to adjourn, second from Commissioner Alexander. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry.
Dates.
Dates, oh, yeah, dates to remember. Let me run over those, even though we've adjourned. Planning and zoning commission Thursday, July the 18th, 10:30 here in Town Hall. Tree board Tuesday, July 23rd, 9:30 a.m., Town Hall. Board of Adjustment, no July meeting. Land care Wednesday, August 7th, 9:00 a.m., Town Hall. August Town Council meeting Thursday, August 8th at 6:00 p.m. Public forum begins at 5:30. Hillside Development Ordinance Subcommittee, August 14th, 9:00 a.m., Town Hall. Board of Adjustment, Thursday, August 22nd, 5:00 p.m., Town Hall. Tree board Tuesday, August 27th, 9:30 a.m., Town Hall. All the Town Hall meetings are Zoom available.
Mayor, just one comment. I think although the 27th is now being listed as the tree board meeting, uh, the tree board is contemplating changing its meeting to the second, I believe it's the second Tuesday of the month from the fourth, so that August meeting date for the tree board may change.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.